Third, 2015 City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, the prayer and the pledge will be led by Pastor Doug Ashley of Evangelical Presbyterian Church. Please rise. Let us pray. Lord God, we pray that your kingdom would come. We pray that your will would be done. Lord, we look around us at the beauty of this city. And we celebrate that. And we know, Lord, though, that those ugly places that we've made, Lord, you're even making those places beautiful. Whether in our hearts or in our city. Lord, thank you for redeeming and restoring those things. Lord, I pray for your blessing on the leaders in this place. That you would give them wisdom and discernment as they seek the beauty of this city. Thank you, God, that you're a great God. In your name we pray. Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor Ashley. Okay, employee recognition. This is a great one. On August 30th, 2015, at 10:18 a.m., the Longview Police Officers responded to an animal call in 1300 Block of Inverness Street. When they arrived, they were told that a local family's dog Buddy had fallen into the storm drain. Officer Kevin Nichols, Officer Ben Easley, Officer Ralph Cattula, and Sergeant Chip Kopke worked together to keep the Labrador Retriever safely out of the storm pipe. Officer Nichols went above and beyond his duties by climbing down through the manhole into the storm drain and then low crawling through an 18-inch storm pipe for approximately 300 feet from one manhole to another in order to rescue the family's beloved pet. Okay, I gotta get up for this one. Okay, first off, guys. 18 inches, really? Man for the job right here. I am so claustrophobic, I get sweaty every time I just think about even doing that. It just, oh, but, you know, guys, in light of all this going on and a lot of what's taking place in our city, it's so nice to see that no matter what, when the call comes in, you guys answer it. And it's so, so comforting to me to know, let me tell you what, if you'll crawl through an 18-inch manhole for a dog, what will you do for me? And I appreciate you guys beyond belief. And I know, I want to recognize, this is former Mayor David McQuarter in the chambers. This was Mayor McQuarter's dog. And I know he is appreciative of this event, and I would like to give him the opportunity to speak to these officers if he would like, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Mac. As I told these fine gentlemen when they showed up that day about Buddy, he meant a lot to us if we have lost him. He is not just our dog, he is our family member. And when the officers came, they never hesitated when they heard it was a dog and not a child. They stepped out, just like they would in any other event in the city of Longview, and stepped forward and took care of the situation. And we appreciate it very much. We talked to our son that night, because this is actually William's dog, and he's in DC now, and so he wanted me to tell each and every one of y'all, "Thank you very much," from the bottom of his heart. And we've always been very fortunate here in Longview to have a great police department, and I still think that's even better now.
And coming from former Mayor McQuarter, he's been here a long time. He and I served on council together for many, many years. And it is just nice to see that our community steps up every time the call is made. So, guys, hats off to you guys. You know, that's just gotta make you feel good, doesn't it? What a great story. What a great group of people we have serving this community. That's once again why these employee recognitions have become so, so much of a fan favorite for me. And I know you all are enjoying it as well as I do. I got plenty of comments about that. And I appreciate you all taking the time to listen and to see what's going on in our community. Okay, citizen comment. I have one speaker card. Sheila Ann Maxie.
Good evening to the council and to the city manager and to the mayor and to the public that's here tonight. I'd like to make a comment on the, on the rate increase, the $1 rate increase on the sanitation budget. And that's for item number six, A, B, C. And also on item number seven, action item. The city manager was asking the council to pass a $1 increase for the sanitation department for the cost of labor. Currently, let's see, when, when the new system was implemented, each household was charged $40 per bin for the containers. And also currently, the trash is picked up once per week, okay? And there is also a bag limit already in place under the ordinance. It's five bags per household, and that includes trash and compass. And the city manager was saying that he needed approximately 16 trucks. One problem with the new system is that the arm is on the right side, and which causes the trucks to have to go up the street and then come back down the street. When they had the old system, there were two employees on the back of the truck. And so, as they come down the street, especially on my street, one would pick up trash on one side and the other would, would pick up trash on the other side, which means that about noon, all of the trash would be picked up. With the new system, because they're having to go up the street and then come back down the street, it's taken them almost all day, like, it's almost 4 o'clock in the evening to pick up the trash. Another factor is that the employees that they use on the back of the truck, as far as I know, that the city uses a temporary service for these employees, and they do not receive benefits, and their salaries are only $7.25 an hour. And also, in order to, in order to, also, the city charges a $50 reconnect fee if your water is disconnected. They charge a additional fee if your bills are late, okay? So you have all these fees being charged. It appears that possibly that the $1 could probably come out of some of those fees that are all already being charged or from the $40 per bin that was charged at the initiation of the new sanitation system. And then purchasing a new truck may not really solve the problem with the trash. I think sometimes that humans can do the job better than a machine. And because the arms are just on one side of the truck, that's causing a slowdown. And then with trash being picked up only once a week, and like I said, the current, how, per household, you have, you can have five bags out there for trash that's under the current, that's under the current ordinance. And also, in 2013, on the website, on the agent, on the city's website, salaries that were listed for some of the top executive employees run from about $8,000, from $7,000 to $8,000. That includes people in public work. And then one salary that was really noticeable is a minimum monthly salary for the city judge of $175,499.59 per month. And that was a minimum salary, and I'm sure you can find $1 out of that salary alone. And some of the other salaries for the, the crew streets, the crew leaders, the streets, they make only like $2,641. And the crew leaders, $2,641.17 for waste collection. Equipment operators in sanitation only make $2,277.47. And the equipment operators, sanitation, $2,500. So the solid waste operator makes $3,000. This is on 2013, and we know that this is 2015. So we know that those salaries have not increased and that the budget that they've probably increased, and you've just recently, I think, prepared a proposal for a 3% increase, which the cost of living is gonna eat that up. So I think if the city council goes within the salary structure of city employees coming from the top down, that they can find that $1 increase. And as far as action item number seven, the city manager has all administrative authority within the city government. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maxie.
Okay.
That's all the speaker cards I have. Would anyone else like to speak that hasn't filled out a card? Very good. Next on to budget items. Consider resolution establishing city fees and charges for the fiscal year 2015, 2016. David Willard.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We wanted to go over the fees, proposed fee changes with you. And I've asked each department head or director to come and tell you about what they proposed and let you ask any questions you might have as we go down the line. You should have the spreadsheet there before you. So first one would be for MOD Cobb Activity Fund, Ms. Hill.
At MOD Cobb, we are requesting that we increase the rental for the rodeo arena in recognition of the fact that we built new restrooms. And now we have to take care of the restrooms and clean them when, when the facility is rented. And at the same time, the users no longer are required to rent porta potties. When they wanted the rodeo arena in the past, they had to go rent their own porta potties. Well, now we've provided restrooms. So we've requested that. And then we also added the new, what we're calling Party Barn, and we had to build that in to the rental.
What is the Party Barn?
It's, it's a covered pavilion space. It has walls and garage doors that you can release.
Where?
It's on the southwest corner of the rodeo arena. It's outside the arena.
Chasing to the restroom.
Probably pick a different name, but I'm fine with the fee.
Okay. It's kind of a barn, so. And then we are asking to put in a recovery charge if other entities want to use our towable bleachers for other public functions. And that's mainly to cover the wear and tear if we move them from site. So that's MOD Cobb, if you have any questions.
Yes, ma'am. Laura, how often, just for discussion's sake, how often is MOD Cobb available?
MOD Cobb or the rodeo arena?
Take your pick. I'd like to know both. I know the rodeo arena, because mainly once a year. But how often is MOD Cobb unavailable to the public? If you wanted to say, schedule an event at MOD Cobb, how often are we unavailable? Or how far out are we booked, I guess I'm trying to say?
If you want a weekend, pretty much you're not gonna get it.
Okay.
Now, if you want during the week, on weeknights, those are more available.
Okay.
During weekdays, it's more available.
So our weekends are pretty full?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Consistently full?
Consistently.
Perfect. Do we ever have any complaints about the fees that are going on as of now?
Of course.
But we're still full?
We're still full, yes.
So consumers driving the fact that we may complain about fees, but we're still full?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, so that's, moving on. We are bringing the Historic Depot into the fee structure, and these fees are all based on what we're already charging for MOD Cobb. It's the same structure with for-profit and nonprofit. We'll have a refundable deposit, we'll have a security fee, we'll have an attendance fee. And then the rentals are modeled exactly after MOD Cobb. So this is a new facility that we're bringing online. Question, yes, ma'am?
I noticed that it says that customers are responsible for providing their own tables, chairs, and equipment.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it even an option for them to rent them from us? Or any type, if they wanna have an event at the depot, perhaps on the asphalt park? We have bleachers, so do we not have anything that's available for them to rent? Or is that separate?
We could, it would kind of be on a case-by-case basis. If you wanna use equipment at MOD Cobb, you rent your tables and chairs.
Right.
So if we had them available, they weren't being used by another event, we would look at moving them over there for you. But we don't have any storage at the depot to have their own equipment on-site.
Okay.
So.
And, and so when you say case-by-case, that's pretty subjective.
Yeah.
Do we have a fee for that? For the, for the rental of tables and chairs? Do we have that outlined somewhere?
It's within the MOD Cobb rates.
Okay. And my other question is, I've noticed on a lot of these rates, it says staff salaries and mileage. Is that a flat rate? Because I know we, generally, you use the same, you know, the people that are within, I think, kind of a certain pay scale. So I'm just trying to understand, on those areas where it says plus staff salaries and mileage reimbursements, blah, 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 is that documented somewhere so that we know exactly how much that is?
The mileage reimbursement is just based on the IRS rate.
Okay.
Which changes every January.
What about the staff salaries?
Staff salaries would possibly vary based on who's assigned to do that, because there is some spread with a tenured employee versus a new employee.
Right.
So it's based on who we can get to work. So that was a cost recovery issue.
Because I know a lot of our staff is really good about volunteering even sometimes on weekends. But then we encourage them overtime. So I don't know how you're picking, I know it's depending on who wants to do that, but I'd like, you know, later on to have something a little bit more finite, to say, "This is how much." Because those fees do add up. That way, if someone has concerns, we'll know, well, this was an $8-an-hour person, or this was, you know. So that would be helpful for me.
Okay, thank you. And then the third one for community services is the library. We are requesting to increase the fees for printing for black and white from 10 cents to 25 cents and for color from 25 cents to 75 cents a copy. I will tell you, the black and white fees have been the same since 1987, since we opened the facility. And we did look, and we are the lowest in the area. Well, I can tell you if you want. Glade Water is currently charging 25 cents for black and white and a dollar for color. Tyler has 25 cents for black and white, they do not offer color. And Upsher County Library is 25 cents for black and white and 75 cents for color. So. Question?
What does Kinko's charge?
I did not go there. I, I can, but.
I'm just curious. Because I'm sure we're under that. Okay, because I have had.
And the computers are all free.
Right. And I've had a few complaints about the library fee going up. But, but I understand it's a cost of doing business. We can't give the service away. We can't, we can't lose money on something that they can go someplace else in the public sector if they so choose. And I understand that. And so if we're a better deal, then, then I'm okay with that. But if we're not, I would like to know that. Because I didn't take the time to call, I'm sorry that I didn't have a chance.
I did not.
But I would like to just make sure that we're not overly competitive with our retailers.
Well, we did only check with other libraries, so.
Thank you. But you will let me know.
I will.
Thank you.
That's all for community services.
Thank you, Ms. Hill.
I couldn't let him go for Parks and Recreation.
I was really kind of interested to see how Michael was gonna do parks.
I was too. It might have been interesting. Good evening, council, mayor, Mr. Willard. We have five different items in, that are, have changed from the fee resolution. The first one is with swimming pools. We've always charged a fee at Ingram. However, it was not in the actual description of it. So we're just cleaning that area up. The second one is, is similar to that. Some of the fields that we do charge for, or they just weren't, were not listed there previously. So those are there. And then the green is a new facility, toll bleachers, similar to at MOD Cobb. We have a set, as do they. And then lastly, pavilion reservations, we have an issue that we charge for, a deposit for pavilion reservations. However, we don't have staff that goes around to check whether they were the one that made a mess or if it was the next group or if it was somebody else. And so we have really no enforcement to be able to say whether we should or should not be able to keep their deposit. So rather than charging them and giving it right back to them, we are no longer gonna charge them a deposit for the reservation of a pavilion. There's still a fee with some of them. Some, some of our pavilions, there are no costs associated with it.
Mr. Karen, I appreciate you looking into that. And I appreciate the fact that, and the citizens should appreciate the fact that we don't have the ability to police that. So there's no reason to charge the citizens for that. And that's being a good steward with their money. So thank you for bringing that to light and removing that from, from being an issue.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
They didn't tell me they changed the order, sorry. At least that's how mine was printed. Okay. The first thing that we have, looking at building inspection, one of the fees that we've had on the, in the plumbing section on private utilities, and this is when developers or commercial projects choose to install their utilities and maintain them on the private side. It's really no different in how they're installed or the materials. Our fee there was 10 cents per linear foot. And that was something that was enacted a number of years ago that was just kind of pulled out of the sky. Really doesn't even remotely cover the cost of service to just do an inspection on that. So what we've done is looked at doing consistency with how our public utility installation is done and just made that on the, on the same playing field where it's 3%, of the cost of actual construction. In our engineering fees, when we do water and sewer infrastructure, the fee there is 3% of the actual cost. When we, when we see developers wanna do their own, hire a contractor to do their own short and long side water and sewer taps, because we don't really wanna be competitive with the private market there. Our fees are a little more expensive there. The way we do that is they have to provide a plan, they have to have a cost estimate. It's 3% of that. It's kind of a, you know, when it's a simple deal, that they could just come in and, you know, pull a simple permit, we had a pretty strenuous process. We're trying to simplify that, just have a basic fee. We have a standard detail that they use for that. They just come in, make application, pay that basic fee regardless of what their actual cost is, and go on down the road. Instead of depending on the contractor and their fees and the, and so forth, we just simplified that. Also, in engineering fees, we, from time to time, get a request to do flood zone determination letters. And that's a real standardized format where they want us to provide information for, for their insurance and so forth. And so we are charging a fee for that, very similar to what we do for zoning verification, because it takes about 30 to 45 minutes to look that information up and draft that letter in the format that this requires. So we're just trying to cover that cost of doing service there.
On that first item, how did you verify the actual cost, the 3%?
When they submit their permit, on the application, they'll submit their, their cost there. And based on what it is, we kind of know what actual costs are. I mean, we don't.
So they couldn't put $100 and?
No, I mean, we know the standard industry cost for doing, you know, water and sewer and storm sewer, you know, based on the size per foot, you know, anywhere from, you know, $25 on up. So, you know, if they came in with a real low-ball fee, we would, we would know that.
Okay.
Any other questions before I go to the next page?
I'll reserve it to the end, go ahead.
Okay. And then in planning and zoning, most of our, our fees there, we're just trying to align to be, the $307, to be consistent, because all of our processes, as far as the amount of time and process and notification and postings that we have to do, it's similar. So we're just aligning those fees so that they're consistent, so that when somebody knows what, when they say, "Well, I have this, this, or this," in planning and zoning, the fees are similar, similar processes. And they don't have to get caught up in the different nuances there. And that, that covers the plating and the replating. The site verification fee, the $50, we do have a zoning verification letter, which is 27. And that's where, when they want us to provide a formal documentation of what their zoning is. But more and more, there are private companies that are doing that, and they'll have a three-to-five-page kind of entitlement form that they want us to fill out. And those are multi-departmental and take a significant amount of research and time. So we're just trying to recover some of that cost there as well. And then the voluntary annexation fee. When we have somebody that comes and voluntarily requests annexation, there's a significant amount of time that staff has to do. And then the, the public notifications, notifying in the newspaper, those ads are not going down. And so we're just trying to recover the cost there as well and be consistent with our other zoning fees. And that's it.
Two things, Mr. Shirley. Okay. How do our fees line up with our surrounding areas?
Looking at some of Tyler's fees.
Thank you.
Looking at a lot of, and, and I didn't go line item, line item, but I know a lot of their fees are a little more. The way their development service is set, is set up, it's more like an enterprise fund where they're trying to be sufficient with their revenues covering their costs. We're not quite that way. We're funded general fund. So they are a little more on most of their fees. Some of their fees are a little less. But by and large, we're probably a little under theirs on, on most of them.
So, which is, I'm glad to hear that. So we're not gonna get, developers gonna come in and say, "Well, your fee is four times what Tyler's fee is."
Shouldn't.
Shouldn't. Okay. Very good. Okay. My next question. Let's just say that there's, we, someone pays an inspection fee, and they have to have a reinspection. How is that handled?
In our fee structure, generally, that, that permit throughout the phases of the project includes those various inspections. We do have a fee structure that allows us to charge for reinspections. Generally, the first reinspection is free. If we're having to go out multiple times for the same thing, we do have the ability to charge for that. We can have the ability. We can have the ability to charge for after-hour and special inspections. We have not been doing a lot of that, because we try, you know...we're trying to work with them to get it to pass, but if we do see somebody taking advantage of it, we do have the ability to recover those costs.
Because my main concern is this. So contractor X brings an inspector out, gets an inspection, has one issue, had to have a reinspection. The new inspector...different inspector comes out the next time, passes what he was tagged on the last time, but finds something that didn't happen the time before.
We...
You understand what I'm saying?
Sure. And, you know, we're trying to...
So we're not charging for that.
No.
If it's already been greened and it gets turned to red, we're not going to charge someone for that, because that would not be fair to the contractor.
Correct. And, you know, in the last year, I cannot count on one hand the times that we've actually charged for reinspection.
Okay.
We have charged double fees where they've done work without permits and things like that, and that's very rare, too.
Understandable. Okay. Very good. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Council, Mayor, Mr. Willard. Public Works has three fee changes this year. Of course, the first one is the sanitation rate that we have discussed. It's the $1 rate increase. The other two are a $500 fee if a fire hydrant meter is moved, and we have to relocate that because we don't know where it's at. We have to find that and read it and reinstall it. That's a $500 fee. And then $200, any time that a contractor would like to have that meter located to another job site. So those are the three fees that we have. Any questions? No? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, any discussion?
I don't know, but I'd like to bring up the water rate increase again.
Okay.
Just for a discussion item. Recall, last week, I talked about our taxpayers subsidizing the water and sewer fund as a partial payment on our outstanding debt. The general obligation interest in sinking fund, we've budgeted to dip into the fund balance to the tune of $200,000 in this proposed budget. And then in the 2016-17 budget, after we sell the final $8 million of our street bonds, that's going to add probably another $500,000 in debt payments. So we're already starting out $700,000 down for '16-17, and I just wanted to toss out this proposed rate increase that the staff proposed back in June would generate about Water and sewer actually owes the taxpayer about $280,000. So, again, any thoughts?
Thank you, sir. Can I have a motion on this budget item?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We'll have a public hearing to consider the proposed fiscal year 2015-2016 budget. Ms. Cohen?
Good evening. The state statute, along with the city charter, requires a public hearing be held on the city proposed budget. The statute also states that at the conclusion of the public hearing, the governing body shall take action on the proposed budget.
Any questions, Counsel? Public hearing is now open. You would like to speak? Public hearing is now closed. Now, we're not voting on this, correct? It's just a public hearing?
Yes, but the next item...
Okay. Very good. All right. Consider ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2015-2016 annual operating budget and appropriating said funds. Mr. Willard?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Tonight, wanted to show you, assuming you adopt the budget that we presented, this would be...we would expect to end the year, this particular year, at the end of September with $11,718.41. This is for the general fund, with revenues of $64,633,838, and the expenditures, as you can see. And we would suggest and propose that there will be a fund balance of $9,885,924 at the end of this next fiscal year. And the reservations we have out of that fund balance for post-employment benefits would give us an ending fund balance of 12.62%, $8,385,924. And that would still be above the 10% requirement of a little over $1,700,000. So the total budget that we would ask you to adopt tonight would have your general fund, your enterprise funds, which include the water and sewer funds, sanitation and those things, all the funds that we have, total of $160,887,483. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Mr. Willard, I was not here last year, but is that not...isn't this a lower budget than we had last year?
I think overall, and I'll need some help here from my people out here, I think, yes, overall, it is. Now, we spent money in capital projects more than we did this year, so your overall total budget is...
Was it $164 last year or something like that?
I believe it is. Was it $164? Okay.
So it was $164 last year?
Yes.
So we're $160 this year? Okay. Very good. May I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Consider a motion to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year 2015-2016 budget. Ms. Cohen?
Thank you. When a budget will raise more revenue from property taxes than in the prior year, a separate vote of the governing body to ratify the property taxes required by the local government code.
Ms. Cohen, let me ask you a question. I just want to understand this. Our property tax rate is going to stay the same.
Yes, sir.
But we need to vote to increase property taxes because we expect more revenue this year from property taxes than last year. Is that correct?
Yes. This is to ratify, to confirm the rate. Yes.
Okay.
That's good news.
Right. Then I move to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year 2015-2016 budget.
That's a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We'll now have a public hearing on the proposed tax rate. Public hearing...go ahead. Ms. Cohen, please. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
No, you're great.
This is the second of the two public hearings required by the state statute. The total is 50.99 cents, and the adoption of the tax rate will be September 10th in 2015.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Would you like to speak on this matter? Public hearing is now closed. Counsel, any questions? Action item. Consider a resolution making appointments, reappointments, and chair designations to various cities, boards, commissions, and committees. As you all know, we have a number of committees that this wonderful council volunteers to be upon, and then other committees that we have the public on as well. We're considering appointments of council members to two boards. For the recently formed Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee, Councilwoman Kristina Shihara and Councilwoman Cassia Williams. For the East Texas Council of Governments Board of Directors, Councilwoman Cassia Williams. Can I have a motion on these items?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all so much for your willingness to serve. And to make sure you, these are very important appointments, and I know this council takes this seriously, as we do, and I appreciate y'all's service, and I look forward to all the good things we have ahead of us in this coming year. Okay. Items of community interest.
Nothing from me, Mayor.
Mr. Moore? Ms. Noddy?
Thank you, Mayor Mack. I just once again want to say thank you to Scott, Karen, and the Parks crew for the phenomenal job they did for the event we hosted this weekend, the kickoff of the CPR initiative. So again, thank you.
Ms. Williams?
I'm just glad we passed the budget. Okay. I won't steal your thunder, Mayor. But I want to commend Mr. Willard, Mr. Bonds, and the directors for this budget. I know what some of the discussions have been, but let me say this. 12% ain't bad when we have a 10% requirement on the books. So you are to be commended for your work in working with us and dealing with us and answering emails, especially me, showing up at offices, Michael Shirley, asking a lot of questions. So thank you. I think that this is going to be a good year, and there are many, many more to come. Good job.
Ms. Shihara?
Nothing from me.
Mr. Wright?
Nothing tonight.
Phantom of the Opera over there.
Motion to approve...I'm sorry. Excuse Councilmember Cindy Allen.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Willard?
Well, just quickly, I do want to thank the mayor and council for...and everybody that participated in the budget. And I appreciate you mentioning my staff, Mr. Bonds, and our budget committee, Mr. Harrah, Ms. Miller, and our finance director, Angela Cohen, and then all the directors that participated. I couldn't do it without them, and it's really, really them. I couldn't even remember what last year's budget was, Mayor, so, as you know. So I appreciate all their help and all the employees that really pitched in there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. The Longview Police Department will be meeting on the front lawn of the Longview Police Department at 11:00 AM tomorrow, September 4, 2015, to honor Texas law enforcement officers and to show support for our brothers and sisters in blue. This time will also coincide with the moment Harris County Deputy Darren Goforth's funeral is set to begin. Attendees are requested to wear blue to show support for your local law enforcement. This event is being held in conjunction with Governor Greg Abbott's statewide call to communities across Texas support this cause for unity, and remember the essential role that law enforcement plays in keeping Texas safe and strong. I hope you will all plan to participate. If you cannot participate, take that moment wherever you are tomorrow at 11 o'clock to keep in mind who is taking care of us at all times. National Night Out is Tuesday, October 6. Register your online...register your party online at longviewtexas.gov/nnO. We had a great kickoff the other night, great attendance at Mont Cobb. It's going to be a wonderful thing for our city to be involved in, and I want to see this...I was given statistics that we had 70-some-odd parties last year, and we ranked 19th in the state. I want to see us boost that up, more parties. I want to be a bigger pull for our community, and I want to see us go up from 19 into that top 10. City of Longview offices will be closed in observance of Labor Day on Monday, September 7. Sanitation Division will operate their normal trash and recycling collection at the week of September 7. For more information, call 903-237-1250. My talk on the budget. We'll get to that in a minute. First off, I want to thank this council, because a lot of us, this was our first budget as sitting council representatives. And in three months, you guys came together, you came up to speed, you did your homework, you asked great questions, you pushed the staff, and you did your fiscal responsibility. And I applaud you for doing that in such a short amount of time. You veterans, thanks for keeping the boat going in the right direction. Mr. Moore, your knowledge is invaluable to us, and we appreciate all that you bring to this council through what you do, and your knowledge will continue to be valuable for us for many years to come. We appreciate that very much, and we appreciate the fact that I think each one of us looked for ways to make this budget lean, and I think that's our responsibility for this community. And even though you might call this an unbalanced budget, because we're having a use of unbalance, we're taking care of things that need to be taken care of in this community, and we have the ability to do it, and I don't see any reason we don't do it at this point in time. Because contrary to what anyone else thinks, we are going to have a better year next year. We're going to have more revenues. We're going to have a better fiscal year for this community next year. I am confident in that, because I know this city is moving forward in a positive direction. We will continue to do that at all times. So I applaud you all. I applaud city staff. You all have put your hours in, and we appreciate every minute of your time, and other citizens will, too. So thank you all very, very much. Okay. Counsel, I know you're going to be very disappointed with this next thing I have to tell you. You cannot participate Monday night in our book club, because it would be an open meetings violation. We will not do that. But the rest of the community is welcome to participate, and so are your spouses. But you all cannot participate online, because we don't want to violate any things that might get us in trouble. But remember, the Go Give a Discussion will be on Monday night from 7 to 8 o'clock. We've had an incredible response so far. It's going to be a lively discussion. I can't wait for this to occur. Books are hopefully available again at Barron's Books, Mead and Hastings. They were sold out completely. The library is out, which is a great thing. I mean, when we're having responses like this and we're out of books, yay for Longview.